...to our town council to order. The agenda has been circulated. There's one addition from Chair. And that is if you would add under new business, document fifteen dash one twenty-five, planning application and vending fees policy. Are any other additions or deletions? Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda's amendments. Yeah, I'm with Councilor Tanner. Seconded by Councilor Millman. All those in favor, signify the appropriate manner. opposed, motion is carried. Number I'd like to make from Chair. Tuesday, June twenty-third was the BHS graduation prom at BHS. One of the traditions we have in Bridgewater, and I did check with eight other mayors, function I was to, that'll come up later on, but what they do for graduation. Do they wear their chain of office? A, none of them wear their chain of office. B, none of them go to anything. So we are unique in many ways. So the tradition in Bridgewater has been that the mayor would greet each of the graduates as they come down, graduation prom. And that then is the official start of, I guess, the graduation activities, the prom, and then the graduation later on. And I guess since we have had our, the mayor's chain of office refurbished and in a nice double oh seven case, I decided everybody got dressed up for the prom and I should wear the chain of office on behalf of the town. So I did that for both that event and the graduation. And I think as long as we go on, I don't think there'll ever be a graduation prom without a Millman connected to it. Tommy and I taught together a lot of years and he's the master ceremonies and I got to greet the graduates. I think this next year will be my wife's favorite because of course she taught in elementary school. So I think her last class will be the graduating class of two thousand and sixteen. So I think she's looking forward to it a lot more than than me. I just see that I'm one year older. She doesn't seem to see that. On Wednesday, June twenty-fourth, as I mentioned with eight other mayors, I was very pleased to join the Cape Breton Partnership. It was a workshop. Cape Breton Partnership was having their annual meeting at Cabot Links in Inverness. And they invited Don Mills from Corporate Research to come down and speak to them about the concept of urban hubs in the province. And he agreed on one condition, and that is that each of the mayors of those nine urban centers would be invited as well. All but one of us was able to attend and it was a great workshop. Thursday, June twenty-fifth was the first of, I think, three introductions I had to make of Minister Fury. I think the first one he was okay with. Then he started to sweat in number two and number three because he was worried about what I might add after I ran out of things to say in the first one. But it was the the pre-conference luncheon, the sort of official opening. Minister Fury brought greetings from the province and spoke about the new Department of Business. I was very pleased to be there and to introduce the minister and our MLA. On Thursday, June twenty-fifth, the Michelin torch run for Special Olympics. The Michelin Social Club joined our MLA and greeted the walkers and runners as they came in and wished our Special Olympians the very best at the summer meet which was held July tenth and twelfth at Saint Mary's University. Certainly an excited, excited group of athletes that were there and their coaches from around the province. And I believe this is the twenty, the twenty-eighth time that Michelin has hosted that torch run here to wish the Special Olympians all the best. Friday, June twenty-sixth was the wrap-up of the pre-conference. I'm sure there'll be some other comments by other members who attended other things. Tyler Hayden, the councillor in Lunenburg, was also the keynote speaker and it was an excellent presentation enjoyed by all the delegates that were there. On Friday, June twenty-sixth was the Bridgewater High School graduation. Was pleased to bring greetings on behalf of the town and Dr. Susan Jodry, so former student at BHS, now professor at Saint Mary's University, was the graduation speaker. Monday, June twenty-ninth, was pleased to emcee a provincial funding announcement of a series of grants under the Recreation Facility Development Grant under Health and Wellness. Minister Fury made those announcements and of course, we were one of the recipients receiving a grant for Generations Active Park, Phase One Dog Park Trail and Drainage. Certainly first now tangible step in moving that project forward. Tuesday, June the thirtieth was the Bridgewater Development Association's annual general meeting. And Dan McLean is back as the president of the BDA for another year. His term is not up yet. Wednesday, July first is that special day, Canada Day. I was very pleased with other dignitaries to bring greetings at the opening ceremonies at King Street Court. I think there was events for whatever your age or interests were. Unfortunately, the weather man played a little bit of havoc with things, but that's, there are things that I think the committee can control. Weather, no matter how hard they try, is not one of them. But I think it went quite well. Certainly there are good reports and I'm sure these people will make some additional comments there as well. We certainly were delighted to officially welcome the Cuban-Canadian goodwill baseball tour and the, some of the Cuban baseball players and the former ML, Major League Baseball stars that were here that day as well. Thursday, July the second, right here in council chambers, there was another funding announcement made by, under the Build Canada Fund, made by MP Gerald Ketti and by our MLA Minister Mark Fury with regards to the downtown and waterfront master plan. Funding announced by those two levels of government under that plan. Once again, the first step and will be a series of steps to revitalize downtown, the earlier one, number of steps to bring about Generations Active Park. On Monday, July the sixth, after a long council meeting, but our town crier, being such a young man, was still up when we journeyed up to his place and presented him with a birthday card and a certificate wishing him a very happy eightieth birthday. Ozzy Styles is a true ambassador for the town in his role as our town crier. Wednesday, July the eighth, was very pleased, councillor Thorburn and I joined councillors Whitaker from the District of Lunenburg and Kevin Malloy, the CAO with the District of Lunenburg. We put a four-man team into the Hit It For Health. Let's say that we didn't come out with anything big, but the Health Foundation did with twenty-one thousand dollars raised in that golf tournament. And that goes towards the purchase of a bladder scanner, which is, was interesting. What it's used for was explained just prior to lunch, which was rather interesting description. It was a great day, great weather. We had a lot of fun there and certainly that was significant dollars raised for the Hospital Foundation for purchase of equipment. And Thursday, July the ninth, was pleased to be down at the Kinsman Field. I actually came across the bridge and saw the RCP officer on his motorcycle and said, "When are the bikes going by?" He said, "If you don't get your car out of here quickly, they're going to go right by you." So I pulled into the parcade and watched all the bikes go, go through the intersection under police escort. And then I was down to Shipyard's Landing towards the end when the sponsors, a number of local corporate sponsors donated bikes that were then drawn for. And a lot of excited young people won those bikes. And an opportunity to speak to Minister Glavine about the event. He certainly conveyed to me how impressed the bikers were with the trip they made down along the La Haye and the Highlight Bean coming across the La Haye ferry. So it's a great event and certainly great comments were made there. And there is one, I guess, special announcement and it was passed on to me, but I think I will ask councillor Tanner if he might like to make this, I think, really exciting announcement for us.
Sure. This afternoon, Lunenburg County got some good news. We'll be hosting and we're awarded the host location for the twenty seventeen fifty-five-plus Nova Scotia Games, which will bring about eight hundred plus athletes to our region in September twenty seventeen. And then hopefully later this week, we'll have two new, other very, very big events with some positive news as well. So good things happening.
Yep. Any other announcements or additions? There's gotta be some Canada Day additions and some pre additions, so.
Mine's not Canada Day. We had a really good Canada Day except for the weather. But mine is because we're not going to have a council meeting until August the tenth. I just want to inform everybody that on August the ninth, we're having our annual garden party. And it's from one until four and it's going to be at Woodland Gardens and Desperse Museum. And this year's theme is War Time at Home nineteen thirty-nine to nineteen forty-five. We're going to have all kinds of entertainment. We're look, the band will be playing, costumes, we're going to do a fashion show. We've got some cars from that time. And we'll have war cake for our, our little treat, war cake and lemonade. So we want everybody to come.
Excellent. Councilor McDonald.
So July first was an exciting day. Sandra Millman and I are both on the Canada Day Committee, joined by a number of community residents and staff. There was quite a number of staff who came out and were a huge help on Canada Day. There was a huge turnout and we thank the community for coming out and supporting us in such a big way. It almost caught us off guard in some respects to have so many people, but we were so pleased to have everyone. Also, the response from the business community and the support they showed in sponsorship was absolutely astounding. Through the sponsorship program alone, we raised over eleven thousand five hundred dollars to help offer one of the best Canada Days we've seen in years. And we can't thank the business community enough for showing us that kind of support and, you know, putting, putting their, their funds on the table to help the community celebrate in such a big way. On Saturday, the fourth, the South Shore Public Library's mobile bus made its debut, debut appearance in Bridgewater. They're running a pilot program in town to try and determine if there is a need for the mobile bus to make some stops in Bridgewater and increase the accessibility to their services. They will be stopping three times, three or four times over the summer, every second week. So the next one, next stop will be on the eighteenth in the parking lot at the Desperse Museum. There were quite a few people around as the diversity festival was, was being in the green area behind the Desperse Museum the same day. So there were a number of people around. Some people came in and checked out the mobile libraries. Most of them had never seen one before. As I was told, we're spoiled town kids. But there's some books signed out and some kids joined the summer reading program. So make sure on the eighteenth that you stop by and check out the bus stop and, you know, help us determine if we, if that, that stop is needed, if it's helping the community. I also stopped in to the diversity festival behind the Desperse Museum on the same day, the fourth. Checked out some of the traditional dress, henna crafts, took in some of the drumming and bagpipes. It was a fantastic event, a lot of fun, very hands-on. Looking forward to, to more of these events in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, your word. On June twenty-fifth, I had the pleasure of bringing greetings from the town to the International Pre Conference being held here in Bridgewater. There were attendees from all over the US and Canada here for almost the full week, if not the full week. Some stayed a lot longer. Pre, for anyone that is not familiar with it, is the Business Retention and Expansion International Group. And it had business people from all over sharing their ideas on how to grow and expand their businesses. A very, very, you know, lively, well-thought-out convention. And something that should be noted is our own Ida Scott, who's the chief executive or chief administrative officer of the Bridgewater Development Association, is now the new head of that organization. And that's a fairly prestigious position for her to hold and someone who is representing our town very well. So it was a very, very well attended and I talked to most of the people attending it, who were from anywhere from Georgia to Alberta, all over. I think this is just absolutely a wonderful piece of the planet. They loved here and many said they will be coming back.
Any other, Councilor Thorburn?
Just, just, just a couple, tiny ones. Some of those I was with you, but I was down to the Kinsman Field on the second of July and, and we had our Cuban baseball team there and presented jerseys to Devon White, Louis Tiant and Spaceman Bill Lee. And town flag and municipal flag along with Mayor Don Down to the Cuban coach and pins to the team. And it was a very enjoyable ballgame. And today I was at a seminar in Halifax and it's called Housing and Aging Population, walking in at Affordable University. And it's two or three different methods of, of looking into affordable housing. There'd be more information on that to come.
Just a couple of advancements and I would probably note because the, I've had a function in East Chester, a family one, when I got the, the tweet that was, I remember that I was going to bring remarks at the diversity festival in the museum. I said, "No, I didn't even know I was supposed to be there." And I have apologized to them is, you gotta check your emails closely. I went back and checked emails and there was one there where I said, "Yes, I'll be there and I'll bring greetings." So social media is great, emails are great, as long as you follow up with them and keep track of them. A few things coming up in the next little while and I didn't go far enough, I guess, with the, the garden party, but that. This Thursday at ten AM at Shipyard's Landing, we approved some while ago, a flag policy for groups, organizations that would like to fly a flag. We're using the flagpole at Shipyard's Landing. And we will be flying, raising the pride flag on Thursday at ten AM. Invite everyone to pop by. On, on Saturday, the summer traditional Bridgewater Barracudas Invitational Swim Meet will be underway. I'll be pleased to bring some greetings there. Certainly if you have an opportunity to pop by and cheer on the swimmers and wish them the best. I think if I'm correct, last week was any indication, not a lot of cheering they need, I guess. And on Saturday, the eighteenth as well, in the afternoon at one PM, Bridgewater Community Gardens Network open hosts at Hodge Podge Gardens. So certainly if you were able to pop by there and check that out as well, I'm sure they would appreciate it. concludes our announcement section. Delegations, we have two components to our delegation part of our meeting. The first one is delegations to register with Sandra and that gives you up to ten minutes to present to council. We can ask questions for three hours, but I would like you, you could keep your presentation to ten minutes or so. The second part of the delegation is anyone in the gallery can address council for up to two minutes if they so wish. So the formal part of the delegation section first, and we have one delegation that will invite Leon DeVried, our Sustainability Coordinator, to come down and do the introductions. He didn't trust me to do it.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This evening I'd like to introduce a member of our summer staff, Linnea Swinimer, who will be speaking on behalf of a project that's running between the Planning and Parks, Recreation and Culture Departments and with the Active Transportation, the Bridgewater Active Transportation Committee. So I'll just get her presentation lined up here and. And Linnea will also introduce herself.
I'm a little small, so I think I can see. Yeah, we're good. You're fine.
Well, I'm good.
Hi. Hi. So hello and welcome. My name is Linnea Swinimer and I'm working with the Clean Foundation this summer. So with the Clean Foundation, I'm working with the community partner, the town of Bridgewater, as the Active Transportation Program Coordinator and Community Garden Coordinator for the entire summer. I'm an Acadia University student and I will be finishing my fourth and final year this coming fall. I will graduate in May with a degree in Community Development and Environmental Sustainable, Sustainability. So thank you so much for having me. Okay, so this is an extremely important project that I'm working on. It's the Active Transportation Project for Bridgewater. It's a signage project. So it's important on many fronts, especially for the Active Transportation Committee. This plan fulfills one of the strategic objectives that the AT Committee mentioned in their strategic plan. So the Heart and Stroke Foundation also plays a large role in this. The AT Committee applied for funding from the Heart and Stroke Foundation, the Heart and Stroke Foundation's Walkability Program, for the project to support heart-healthy walking in the community of Bridgewater. The AT Committee was successful and received fifteen hundred dollars to put towards this project. These funds, along with the AT Committee's budget, add, add up to a total of twenty-five hundred dollars to complete this endeavor. Okay, so Phase One started with Acadia University students coming in in the spring, in the spring and late winter. So students came in to work on and research the topic and the area and come up with preliminary recommendations for a signage project. After that, we moved into Phase Two and that's where kind of nearing the end of Phase Two at the moment. So the project was handed over to me under the guidance of Leon DeVried. And we're working together to design the signs, figure out where the signage will go, and then eventually implement the signs and then evaluate how they're doing. Then Phase Three is the long-term plan and that's program deployment. So it's to analyze the findings of Phase One and Phase Two in entirety and look at how the signage projects work, how it didn't work well. And as I said, we're currently in the middle of Phase Two. Okay, so the purpose of this project, as I have lined up there, is to increase destination-oriented walking in the downtown core of Bridgewater, focusing on people who have driven there and then, and then can be encouraged to walk rather than drive to their next errand or shopping destination in the downtown. So this project is to encourage individuals to use more heart-healthy activities in their everyday life and continue to walk instead of driving shorter distances. This helps promote a healthy active lifestyle, which Bridgewater has been working very hard to achieve. Okay, so the considered signage types that we looked at were slanted standing signs. So this was in the Acadia Proposal. Formal wayfinding signs, which are standing signs that give information in a classic town setting. So walkabout signs, which we will look at in a moment, which is one of the chosen signs we picked. Pavement floor graphics, so these are on the ground. Participatory signage is, think about a chalkboard where something's written on it and individuals can then write their own ideas. And then target audience involvement is when you are involving participants and people who are passing by to use the sign as in a piano staircase. So there's a couple of different places where they have an actual piano line of staircase. So when you step on each step, makes a noise and encourages people to walk. So the signs that we chose were the walkabout sign. An example is the Walk Your City campaign, which you can see up there. So it's a very simple signage type. It's very quick, to the point, and it's also kind of informative. It's a little more casual. So, you know, it's eleven, it's an eleven-minute walk to a local neighborhood grocery store. Instead of giving a specific place, it's kind of like, oh, eleven minutes, that's not so bad. Pavement floor graphics are a little more of that encouragement idea. So it's this many steps and then involving, involving pictures and graphics to get the message across. And then again, the participatory signage, which is down at the bottom, which is having community involvement and individual involvement in the signage type. So this is a list of proposed signage locations and I know this is small. I apologize for that. But we are looking at our seven signs being on King Street in the South Parcade, King Street, the corner of the old bridge, the RBC Plaza, right in front there. There's a bench. That would be some pavement graphic. The King Street North Parcade, so to prompt individuals to walk around King Street because as I have said before, this is, this project is promoting walking. It's not encouraging people who aren't walking, it's people who are already walking considering pushing them to walk a little bit further, encouraging them to walk further. Then also on La Haye Street, Riverside Park, just a general walking prompt there is what we're looking at. And then the old bridge, so the corner of the old bridge, again prompting people to get across the bridge when they're on King Street. And then at the Bridgewater Mall. So the mall has been extremely, extremely, they've assisted us very much in having our signage there. And they have been very excited about the prospect of this project. So that's really nice. Okay, so I'm going to talk to you guys a little bit about hashtags. So a show of hands, who knows what a hashtag is? Anybody? I realize to do this in council? Yeah? Okay, good. That's good. So we know what hashtags are. Talking to the AT Committee, a lot of them didn't know what hashtags are, so this is really good. I explained it to them and I think it's a really cool way to get different age demographics involved with the project. And also to be able to analyze the data a little bit more accurately, seeing how many people are using this hashtag allows us to see how many people are actually, you know, walking due to the prompts. So it's not just a number sign. So a hashtag allows the slogan to be searched in a database such as social media, for example, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. So hashtags are a really great branding, marketing tool because they allow for that connectivity. And it also encourages people to continue on to the next one. So if you see a hashtag somewhere, it's when it encourages them, oh, where can I find another one? So. And hashtag, hashtagging is fun. I'll remember that. Okay, so what to expect and what you should know right now. So in the next few months, there will be surveying taking place by myself and other members of the AT Committee. This will happen all around the town of Bridgewater where we are proposing signage. And pilot signs are going to be put up around the town. So these signs will not be permanent, they will be temporary to see if the sign types that we have chosen will actually work in the, in the decided upon area. So be looking for that hashtag, Bridgewater hashtag, and definitely tweet it and Facebook it and send a picture of yourself with those signs. That would be fantastic. So does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Thanks, Linnea. Any questions? Councilor Graves?
Just, just a comment, I guess. If you're going to walk around town and you're encouraging people to shop.
Yeah.
Then they're going to have lots and lots of, hopefully carrying lots of different types of parcels.
Right.
It occurred to me that if there was a way of, of having a shopping cart that you could pick up at Soli's, drop it off at, at King Street Shoes and go to your car at the North Parcade, that that might be something that would encourage people to walk?
I think that you should email me and we should talk more about that perspective idea. I don't know. I haven't, we haven't looked into that at all, but I definitely think that's really thoughtful into the project.
Because it would be a barrier, wouldn't it?
Um, I think that the idea is that you're parking in a central location. So if you're shopping on King Street, you'll shop there, put your bags in your car and then walk over to Mark's Rooker House or Sport Check, I think is the general idea that we've been working on. But I definitely see where you're coming from.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else?
Any other questions? Lina? Councilor Tanner?
Linnea, you mentioned hopscotch.
Yeah.
You ever see? I just forwarded this early this week to our Director of Recreation, hopscotch that they were doing in some city somewhere. Is that a painted?
It would be, it would be one of the floor graphics.
Okay.
So these floor graphics are pretty cool, pretty new. I was first introduced to them at Acadia University and I did a lot of research, actually. So yeah, so we have the floor graphics as the middle one there. So they're kind of like vinyl stickers, but they're just in a really durable, durable material. Now they are different for indoors and outdoors. And the goal of this is that we're using them for both, so inside the mall. So it's a little bit different material than it is outside, obviously. They, now, they wouldn't be very useful in the winter, so they do have a bit of a, a bit of a timestamp on them, how long they can be used. But in summer, they're ideal outside, encouraging walking.
I, I know this is just a pilot, but I'm wondering if we could get some quick money from Health and Wellness maybe as part of this. I don't, for something fun like that, I guess, maybe.
Yeah.
And part two, your signs, do they have the town of Bridgewater logo on them?
Uh, they, they will.
All right, just a little one?
Yeah, just a little, but it'll be there.
Councilor Thorburn?
Just a comment. Leon went over to Acadia University, I think the end of March, and met with the students there and spent the day there. And then they come back the first couple of days of April. So they've done a lot of research in this and this is what's happened as a result, the work that they put into, all volunteer work. And I think it's very important for us to follow through with it.
Any other questions? Any other questions, Leon? Thank you very much, and we are looking forward to our hashtags and our signs and seeing what happens.
Well, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, we'll move then to minutes. The minutes of June the 8th have been circulated. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those circulated. Moved by Deputy Mayor McGinnis, seconded by Counselor Mailman. Comments, questions? All those in favor signify in the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Item number six is our planning items. Six point one is a public hearing. Development agreement for 547 King Street, Thai and Thai and True Company Limited. Jamie Ellen. Two hearings tonight.
Yeah, so I'm sure that many of you will remember the development agreement application that we've received from the group that owns the Lanai Thai Restaurant. They have applied for development agreement to permit them to use the restaurant property as a lounge and beverage room, and under our planning documents, that requires a development agreement. Circulated the development agreement, it's very straightforward, simply adds the use of beverage room and lounge to the permitted uses on that property. The proposal doesn't involve any new construction, and they don't anticipate any changes to the outside of the building to result from this application. The subject property is in an area that's zoned historic downtown commercial, and you can see it there, right at the foot of the old bridge. So I'm sure that many of you are aware that this is a great location in town to have this kind of facility, the restaurant and lounge use, it's very well with our goal of making King Street the cultural center of Bridgewater. And there's just a picture of the building itself, set right on the sidewalk, which is characteristic of compact built form, which is one of the things that we're trying to encourage in our new planning documents. So some of the things, it's really unlikely to do much, cause much change on King Street, the signage, the lighting, the architectural character of the area are not expected to change as a result of this application. So there's some statutory requirements that need to be met before the Town Council can approve a development agreement. So just to summarize, we've gone through the public participation meeting, we've had the first notice of council's intention to pass this development agreement, we've gone through different notification processes for landowners of adjacent property, and then there's been some advertisement in the newspaper as well. And so now we're here at the public hearing, and if there's anybody in the gallery who has any comments or questions, I guess this would be the time to make them, but the council's recommendation is that Town Council approve the proposed development agreement as it was circulated.
Maybe Jamie Ellen, my oversight as well. This is a public hearing, and there were some instructions I was supposed to have provided-
Oh, my apologies.
... before we started, which you've covered them all.
Okay.
The public hearing is opened by myself. The statutory requirements, Department of Human Resources Administration Officer, were all presented. We've just heard the overview by the planner. There is now an opportunity by the developer if they wish to speak. Then there will be comments by the public on the proposal, those in favor, those opposed, any other comments, and then the closing remarks by the chair, which I guess is me. So it's, thanks, Jamie Ellen. Does the developer wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Is there anyone in the gallery who wishes to speak, in favor or opposed? Guys are making this really easy on me right now. Next step would be a decision by council, and I would remind everyone that the, there is a right of appeal by the developer. I guess it would be if we denied the request, the developer would appeal it. I'm not sure they'd appeal it if we approved it. And the public have the same right as well. So if no one else to speak, the chair would entertain a motion.
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater enter into a development agreement regarding the property located at 547 King Street in a manner similar to the draft development agreement dated July the 16th, 2015, and that the mayor and chief executive administrative, chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute this agreement only within the next 12-month period. Should the document not be signed within the 12-month period, council shall reconsider any request to sign the document agreement as a new application and follow the entire process required under the Municipal Government Act.
Seconder? Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any comments from the mover, seconder?
Just one. It seems like it's a long process. It takes over four months for something that's this simple. There must be some way of getting rid of a lot of red tape and making it easier for this stuff to take place.
You always, we always say that when it's something that seems to be a lot of support for, the difficulty always becomes, and I can name a number of them, where it wasn't quite this simple. And it's how to differentiate between one that seems everybody's in agreement with, so let's just move it on, and how to deal with the ones that aren't quite as simple. I can think of a swimming pool being put in a former inn in the town of Bridgewater with residences around it. That was not a slam dunk, there was a lot of back and forth in that one, so it's hard to have one process that works for everything, but I think until a better one comes around, I'll still live with this one, I guess. Ready for the question? Deputy Mayor McGinnis?
I probably have never noticed this before, but in the motion, a second line, in a manner similar to, we will see the development agreement?
You call it.
Yeah, I don't intend to make any changes. That's the language that's in the policy, that's why it's worded like that.
Really?
Yeah.
I've never noticed that before.
Always the same.
Thank you.
Ready for the question?
Question?
Questions, the call, all those in favor, signify in the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. And we have a second public hearing, following the same process as the last one. So Jamie Ellen will provide an overview, and there'll be an opportunity for the developer and the public to speak if they wish. Jamie Ellen?
Okay, so this is an application for amendments to our municipal planning strategy and our land use bylaw to permit some residential conversions in the comprehensive residential So this would permit people to convert existing dwellings that were built prior to August 1975 into a two-unit building or, sorry, a two-unit dwelling, or permitting them to convert an accessory structure into a dwelling unit. The comprehensive residential zone is intended to be a flexible zone, and it permits a variety of different residential developments and some small-scale commercial development. And in the zone now, the property owner could build two new, I'm sorry, a new two-unit dwelling but could convert an existing dwelling into two units. So this change would permit them to maintain the existing structure on the site instead of tearing it down. The tax amendment would apply to all pre-1975 main accessory dwellings in Bridgewater, and we've established there are six total properties that have changed wood, wood effect, and you can see them there noted by stars. The property that, from which this application originates is 312 La Havre Street, and the accessory structure in question is in the picture here. It's an accessory structure that was built in the 1960s and was formerly used as a doctor's office. There is no intention to make any exterior renovations, although they will be permitted to do so as long as it's permitted in the land use bylaw. You can see where the subject property is located, they're close to the movie theater. So the applicant wishes to convert the accessory building to a small apartment, one-bedroom apartment of approximately 509 six square feet. So the surrounding land use is primarily residential, with some commercial, of course, in that La Havre Commercial District very close. North of the subject property is the Centennial Trail. There's other properties that are zoned comprehensive residential, more low-density residential in the area, and then, of course, La Havre Street and the La Havre River south of the property. So some of the things that we look for when we're doing our planning analysis is how well the application fits with our planning strategy, and there are a number of principles that this application supports, including encouragement of residential growth, provision of a range of housing options, increasing the residential density in strategic locations, including the downtown in this area, and encouraging residential infill development, which this would be because it would increase density or permit some different kinds of density. So if the proposed amendment is approved, a total of six properties could convert their main or accessory buildings. Like I said, they could convert the main building into two units, or keep one unit in the main building and also convert accessory structure, so the total number of units on the property would be a maximum of two. So again, there were a number of statutory requirements. So the application was received on March 21st. There were notifications sent to adjacent landowners and advertisements placed in the newspaper for a public participation meeting, which happened on May 14th. On June 8th, council gave its notice of intention to amend the planning documents, and then there were two notices in the newspaper on June 24th and June 30th advising public that a public hearing would be taking place this evening. So since all the statutory requirements have been met, staff recommend that Town Council approve proposed amendments to municipal planning strategy and the land use bylaw.
Thanks, Jamie Ellen. The applicant wish to speak? Dr. Sandin, you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the gallery who would like to speak for or against? Oso? Hearing none, someone prepared to bring a motion forward?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater amend the town's 2014 municipal planning strategy and 2014 land use bylaw to permit the conversion of an existing accessory structure at 312 La Havre Street to a residential dwelling unit, and in accordance with Document 15-063, and authorize staff to provide any necessary public notification.
A seconder? Seconded by Counselor Graves. Mover, seconder, wish to comment? Looks like a very nice home. Counsel Thorburn?
Yeah, this gives all six properties the right-
Yep.
-to build, even though there's only buildings on three properties now. They want to put on a second structure.
Right, but it only applies, this change only applies to buildings that were constructed before 1975.
Seventy-five, but there's six property locations. Three have additional structures on them now, and three have just the one structure, I understand, the home.
Well, yes.
And they could put a second structure in once this bylaw goes through.
I mean?
They could put a second structure on that property if this change goes through.
They could do that now with that change.
As a right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Ready for the question? Questions? First, the call, all those in favor of the motion, signify in the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Thanks, Jamie Ellen. Correspondence for information, there's none. Correspondence for action, eight point one, is request for proclamation drowning prevention week, July 19th to 25th. Counselor, are prepared to bring that forward?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater declare the week of July, excuse me, July 19th to 25th, 2015, as drowning prevention week in the town of Bridgewater.
Seconded by Counselor Tanner. Any comments? Ready for the question? All those in favor, signify in the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Eight point two is the letter from now Lunenburg County, and their project, municipal government reimagined, and there is a specific request, motion being made to the four councils that were part of this, that would be Town of Lunenburg, Town of Mahone Bay, Town of Bridgewater, and the District of Lunenburg, and we are dealing with it at our council meeting tonight. So there are two motions there, obviously one hinges on the other. So what is the wish of council?
Yes, your worship, I move that Town Council of Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of now Lunenburg County, that the town of Bridgewater, Town of Mahone Bay, Town of Lunenburg County, Lunenburg, and the municipal district of Lunenburg establish a steering committee of two representatives from each municipal unit to develop a comprehensive work plan to further investigate benefits that may be realized through a new governance model for the four participating municipal units, and so the CAOs for each unit together will draft the terms of reference for the steering committee.
A seconder? Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Mover, seconder, wish to comment? Mover?
Just briefly, your worship, this is a very important first step, and hopefully at the very least having a good, hard look at a new governance model for Lunenburg County. I personally think it has a lot of merits, and so I'm hoping that council will support this motion.
Seconder, wish to comment?
I agree with you.
Any other comments? Ready for the question? Questions, the calls, the favors, signify in the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. There are two representatives, and I sent an email over to council asking who was interested or received, three names. There's a recommendation there for two. Someone's prepared to bring that forward?
I don't think, Counselor Tanner, myself should bring it forward.
Well, I can't, I'm in the chair, mayor's chair.
I move that Town Council of Town of Bridgewater appoint Deputy Mayor McGinnis and Counselor Tanner to the now Lunenburg County Municipal Government, Government, Government Reimagined Steering Committee.
A seconder? Second? Thorburn? Any questions? By the way, the third one was myself, because I deferred to Deputy Mayor and Counselor Tanner. Ready for the question?
Question.
Questions, the calls, the favors, signify in the appropriate manner. Opposed, motion is carried. Expecting big things. Nine point one, we were expecting a presentation on the Brookside Cemetery Pond. That individual is not here, so we'll postpone that either later in the meeting if he shows up or to another meeting. So we'll go to nine point two. It's tender 15-02E, Dominion Street Water and Street Upgrade, Document 15-111. Mr. Fina, would you like to make any comments on that one?
Thank you, your worship. The town received four tenders of the Dominion Street Upgrade Project consisting of a new water main street and sidewalk for the area between Forest Hill Road to Churchill Street. The approved budget is $850,000, of which the town portion is $490,000, and the PSC is $360,000. The Engineering Department recommends that the tender be awarded to the lowest tender being Dexter's Construction at a cost of $831,461.50, including the 15% HST, or $753,998 net HST.
Someone's prepared to bring that forward? Counsel Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award tender 15-02E to Dexter Construction Company Limited at a cost of $831,461.50, including 15% HST, $753,998 net HST.
Seconder? Seconded by Counselor Mailman. Mover, seconder, wish to comment?
Yes, Larry, that's come in under tender by a little bit, didn't it? How much was allowed in our budget? Do you remember?
We're expecting the town's portion to be about $432,000 net HST.
Thank you.
Counsel Graves?
And the sidewalks, will we concrete? Yes. Is there a comment on that? How much longer do they last?
Certainly, it's well-known that concrete will last much longer than asphalt, and we're seeing only a marginal increase in cost as compared to asphalt, so it's worth the investment.
Is that generally how it works? I thought concrete was so much more expensive.
In the past, when we explored that option, we did see a higher difference in concrete. Concrete was much higher than asphalt.
So what's bringing the cost down? Just curious. What's bringing the cost down?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor McGinnis? The cost may not be down. If you read that closely, there's a potential for it to lower our budget, is there not? Because it's the type of tender it is, it's on your quantities and that type of thing?
Correct, it is a unit price contract, so the actual cost is the cost of the total units. So it's units put in place versus a lump sum cost, correct.
So it is a sort of a floating number?
Correct.
But that's our best guess at this time?
We, when preparing the tender, we tried to estimate the quantities higher than actuals, but, you know, there are circumstances where the length of the water main, we may have to go a little farther or a little less. to go a little farther, or a little less, or whatever, so it is the measured quantities in place.
Other questions? Ready for the question? Question. Question call, all those favor the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. Nine point three is a recommendation of the Strategic Initiative Coordinator, 93 Dominion Street, or commonly referred to as the Girl Guide Cabin. It's document fifteen dash one one three. Patrick choose to make comments?
Certainly, your worship. The report on 93 Dominion Street has been brought to council to deal with a longstanding situation over responsibility for the building on that property, which is commonly known as the Girl Guides Cabin. The land was deeded to the town in the 1930s with the intent that it be used by the local Girl Guides Association and held in trust by the town. Sometime prior to the mid 1970s, a building was erected at 93 Dominion, and the matter recently came to the attention of staff because of a submission to the Grand Organizations Committee. The Girl Guides had applied for some in-kind work to be done by the town, carrying its basic repairs, especially in the wake of the pretty rough winter that we had this past season. So that prompted questions about the ownership of the building, and whether a lease existed, and what the responsibilities of the town and the Girl Guides Association are. A search of records by town staff, and the Girl Guides found no written lease pertaining to that building, either here in town hall with the local Girl Guides Association, or at their headquarters in Halifax. The town has been insuring the building for at least thirty years, according to staff. So in the absence of a historical document, staff and the Girl Guides Association are both recommending that it's in the best interest of all parties to negotiate a lease, explicitly detailing the responsibilities as it pertains to the building.
Pretty straightforward. Prepare to bring a motion forward?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to negotiate a draft lease agreement with the building's tenant, the Girl Guides Association, clearly detailing the responsibilities of the property owner and the tenant.
Go to the second. Seconded by Counselor Graves. Any questions, comments? It's a logical thing to do, clarify. All those favor the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. And there's a second suggest a motion with regards to damage over the winter and insurance. Someone prepared to bring that one forward?
Yeah, sure. I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater direct staff to work the town's insurance adjuster to review any damage to the building at 93 Dominion Street caused by severe weather this past winter season, to deem if the costs associated with any repair may be covered by the insurance policy the town holds on the building.
Second by Counselor Mailman. Seems straightforward, yes.
Good move.
All those favor the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, Patrick. Nine point four is a recommendation of the Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, a off-leash dog park naming rights. Document is fifteen dash one one four. Someone in the council prepared to bring that forward. Counselor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Director of Parks Recreation and Culture and accept social veterinary services. Request for naming rights to the Generations Act of Park Off Leash Dog Park for a ten-year period, the amount of $10,000 with terms as outlined in document fifteen dash one one four.
Second. Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Mover, second or wish to make any comments?
The committee shopped this around to various businesses in the community, and some businesses outside. It was a comprehensive package that allowed different options for different businesses, and you know, I think we certainly appreciate social veterinary services stepping up and taking ownership and naming rights for the park, and appreciate that, so.
Deputy Mayor, any comments?
Much needed facility for our town, and that's grateful for a business to step up the plate and put the money where the money is.
Any other comments?
I'm just pleased that they stepped forward. I actually went out and took those packages to several businesses, several veterinarian clinics, and they were the first ones to step up and respond to it, and I'm still waiting on the other ones.
Ready for the question? Question. Question call, all those in favor signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. Nine point five is a request for proposals. Two thousand and fifteen dash zero one, supply rotating biological contractor and media support structure wastewater treatment plant. Hope I don't have to explain what that is. Tim, would you like to explain?
Yeah, the town of Bridgewater received one proposal for the supply of a rotating biological contractor and provisional media support structure to replace one of the eight biological contactors at the wastewater treatment plant, and to refurbish a second biological contractor. We received one single tender with the supply of the RBCC assembly for a price of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-nine cents. They provided the supplier Evoqua Water Technologies, provided a pricing on an optional site phys and sort of start up for twelve thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty-four cents, and two provisional items, which was provisional supply of media support framing with fasteners at sixteen thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighty cents, and extended warranty, three year extended warranty for a price of six thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixteen cents. All of these prices include net HST. It should be noted that the optional item and the two provisional items included with the proposal, these items were included as options to those specified in the quest to allow staff the ability to evaluate each item based on the total project cost without Staff has evaluated and has made a determination that the site phys is not required, and that the three-year warranty is not of good value considering the lifespan of the equipment. So the recommendation is that the tender be awarded to Evoqua Water Technologies Limited at a cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and nine cents, including net HST, which includes the supply of the rotating biological contractor assembly and the provisional media support framing and complete with fasteners. And that price including HST, fifteen percent HST would be two hundred and forty-one dollars, two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and point four cents.
Counselor, prepare to bring that forward?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department that RFP 2015 dash zero one be awarded to Evoqua Water Technologies Limited at a cost of two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars, nine cents, including four point two eight six percent net HST, which includes the supply of the rotating biological contractor assembly and the provisional media support framing, complete with fasteners.
Go to the second. Heard by Counselor Thorburn. Counselor Graves.
Sorry, just a question. Under, where it says budget implications, leaving twenty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, ninety-one cents remaining budget to purchase the bearing assemblies and carry out the framing support collar repairs, I get the impression that wasn't part of the original tender? And I'm just wondering why it wasn't, or am I missing something, or?
Upon evaluation of this equipment, where this is a very specific piece of equipment, we're sourcing this out of the United States, so it was determined that some of the less exotic parts would be sourced probably at a lesser cost locally.
Okay.
Allow us to utilize not only local suppliers, but local resources to be able to do the work.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. Nine point six is another, is a tender fifteen dash zero four E, a new full-size four-by-four half-ton truck, document fifteen dash one twenty-two. Larry?
The town received one tender for the new full-size half-ton truck for the Public Works Department. This only submission was actually for a three-quarter ton truck to meet the requirements of the eight-foot-long box, as this option is no longer available in the half-ton truck. The three-quarter ton truck allows us a larger area and carrying capacity for carrying equipment and supplies. The approved budget is thirty-five thousand dollars. Staff is recommending that the tender be awarded to the lowest and only submission from GW Motors Limited for a total price of thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, including fifteen percent HST, or thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents net HST.
If someone prepared to bring that forward? Counselor forward.
I would move that town council of town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award tender fifteen dash zero four E, new full-size four-by-four three-quarter ton truck to GW Motors Limited for the new 2016 Ford F-250 three-quarter ton four-by-four, painted white, for a total price of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, eighty-one cents, including net HST.
Go to the second. Seconded by Counselor Tanner. Any comments? Counselor Thorburn?
We're painting it white, so I'm assuming we're going to have a new town logo on it as well?
Yes, we are.
Any other questions?
This will be the first, right? First town, correct?
Counselor Tanner?
We're not painting it white over another color. We're getting it white, yeah. Okay.
Comes green. All those favor the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. This is tender night. Tender fifteen dash zero five E asphalt supply and asphalt supply in place, document fifteen dash one one nine. Mr. Feener again?
The town received three tenders for asphalt supply and asphalt supply in place. Two submissions included the same unit price for spreader patch. The town's purchasing and tender policy allows for evaluation based not only on purchase price, but other criteria, as outlined in the report. We are recommending that the tender be awarded to the lowest tenders for half-inch asphalt hand patch to La Havre paving, and that the half-inch asphalt spreader patch, half-inch asphalt overlay, half-inch asphalt supply and cold plating be awarded to Dexter's Construction.
Someone prepared to bring a motion forward?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award tender fifteen dash oh five E asphalt supply and asphalt supply in place as follows and outlined in document fifteen dash one one nine. Half-inch asphalt hard patch, or sorry, hand patch La Havre paving, two twenty-one ninety-five, including HST, estimated quantity equals four hundred tons. Half-inch asphalt spreader patch Dexter Construction, one eighty-one seventy, including HST, estimated quantity is a five hundred ton half-inch asphalt overlay Dexter Construction, one hundred and eighty dollars, fifty cents, including HST, estimated quantity nine hundred ton. Half-inch asphalt supply only Dexter Construction, one hundred and forty-one dollars, forty-five cents, including HST, estimated quantity two hundred and fifty ton, and cold plating of asphalt Dexter Construction as outlined in document fifteen dash one one nine.
Go to the second. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Any comments? Deputy Mayor McGinnis?
No comment. It's tonny, not ton. Is there a difference?
Pardon me?
Well, the spelling in the motion says tonny. T-O-N-N-E. Is that different than a ton?
Yes.
So it should be tonny?
It's tonny, yes.
For twenty-three years, we've used two words interchangeably. We have, I should say, not you guys, we have.
So just, one question might be, is there any way that the partner with other closer municipalities to save money? So the town of Lunenburg as an example, go in and together?
We actually tried to coordinate some work with another municipality, or I shouldn't say that, they've asked us...
And who was that?
Our timing, the town of Lunenburg.
Okay.
On some other work, but I don't believe, it wasn't, I guess, meeting their schedules, so we are looking at those options, I guess, you know, when it allows for it.
I would imagine asphalt kind of time, it's all about the timing? Or do you, can you buy it and just take it as needed?
No, whereas hot mix, you take it off the mixer and put it in place before.
Right away, okay.
All those favor the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Contradicted? Any or opposed? Motion is carried. Nine point eight, tender fifteen dash zero six E gravel supply, document fifteen dash one one seven. Larry?
The town received seven tenders for the supply of gravel as outlined in the attached report. We are recommending that the tender for the supply of all gravels be awarded to the lowest tender, being Gerald W. Vino Excavation Company Limited, and that the supply of top soil be awarded to Social Ready Mix Limited.
Someone prepared to bring that motion forward?
I would move that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award tender fifteen dash zero six E, as contained in document fifteen dash one one seven, and as follows, that all gravels be awarded to the lowest tenderer, Gerald W. Vino Excavation Company Limited. Class A, twelve dollars and eighty-eight cents per tonny, estimated quantity seventeen hundred tonnies. Class C, twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents per tonny, estimated quantity eight hundred tonny. One inch minus, fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents per tonny, estimated quantity four hundred tonny. Shale pitmon, thirteen fifty per cubic yard, estimated quantity five hundred cubic yards. Class E, twelve dollars and twelve cents per tonny, estimated quality one hundred and twenty-five tonny. And gabrian rock, sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents per tonny, estimated quantity one hundred and fifty tonny. And that the tender for the top soil be awarded to the lowest tender, Social Ready Mix Limited. Delivered twenty-three dollars per cubic yard, estimated quantity two hundred and fifty cubic yards at tractor trailer loads, and supply only twenty-three dollars per cubic yard, estimate quantity one hundred cubic yards.
Go to the second. Seconded by Counselor Tanner. Any comments? Mover, second or Counselor Graves?
So the same question, is this gravel something that you could buy in bulk with everybody in Southwest Nova? It's not something that has to be taken at once? Can it, can we be taken in tractor trailer loads?
We do already, as far as the town of Bridgewater. It comes in large tractor trailer load, saving in the delivery cost of multiple smaller trucks.
But what would happen if Yarmouth, Kentville, Bridgewater, and Lunenburg put in and made it, you know, ten, fifteen thousand tonny of something? Would that be?
I guess as far as the supply goes, like we have close suppliers, a number of close suppliers. If they start trucking it beyond, you know, the area of Bridgewater, I would say their delivery costs would go higher.
Counselor Thorburn?
Through going over the detailed documents, Larry, it seems like the prices have dropped this year compared to last year on the pavement as well as on the tonnies here for rock and much.
Yeah, it seems like about a one to two percent decrease.
Decrease, yeah.
Yes.
Decrease is good.
Yeah. Question?
Question, question call, all those favor the motion signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. Nine point nine is the recommendation of the Director of Finance, Capital Investment Plan, document fifteen dash one one five. Don?
The capital investment plan is a requirement of the gas tax funding agreement. We're required to complete this form with our capital budget information, and it's also required to be brought back to council. It's basically the five-year capital budget that you've seen before, but it's put on the province's forms so that we can send it in and make sure we keep getting our gas.
Someone prepared to bring that motion forward?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the capital investment plan as presented in document fifteen dash one one five.
Second. Seconded by Counselor Mailman.
Pretty sure we want the gas tax money.
This is a formality that has never been questioned on in the past, I assume? It's just a...
Yeah, it is, and I've had discussions with the folks at the Infrastructure Secretary of saying it's the same as the capital budget. Why does council have to approve it, but they insist?
Ready for the question? Question call, all those favor signify in the appropriate manner? Opposed? Motion is carried. Nine point ten, request for proposal two thousand and fifteen dash zero two, town hall boiler replacement. Larry, are you gonna say anything with that, or?
Sure. The town received two submissions for the request for proposals for the replacement of the town hall boilers. As a result of the installation of the new heat pumps previously, the new boiler will serve as backup heat as well as primary heat for level one, rather than the primary heat source for the entire building. The approved budget for this project is seventy thousand dollars. We do recommend that the request for proposal be awarded to Carmichael Engineering Limited for option two, for cost of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents, including fifteen percent HST, or sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents net HST.
Someone prepared to bring that motion forward?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award RFP two thousand and fifteen dash zero two to Carmichael Engineering Limited for the sum total of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifteen cents, including HST, or sixty thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents net HST.
A seconder? Second by Councilor McDonald. Any comments? Councilor Forward?
Just a question, Larry, what do we put in the budget to replace the boilers? Do you remember how much money we put in there?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, so, there's another one that's under. Should be a good year. We're all coming into.
Give it time. Long as, long as you weren't here at five o'clock. Question?
Questions called. All those who favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Nine point eleven, tender fifteen dash zero three E, Desprez Museum HVAC replacement, document fifteen dash one twenty-one. I guess Larry again, you wanna?
The town received three tenders for the supply and installation of the designed HVAC system for the museum. The approved budget is two hundred thousand dollars. We are recommending that the proposal, tender, tender be awarded to the lowest submission, being Seacoast HVAC two thousand and four Limited, for a sum of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy cents, including fifteen percent HST, or one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four, forty-seven cents net HST.
Someone prepared to bring that motion forward?
Yes, your worship. I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award tender fifteen dash zero three E, Desprez Museum HVAC replacement to Seacoast HVAC two thousand and four Limited, for a total sum of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy cents, including HST, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-seven cents net HST.
A seconder? Second by Councilor Mailman. Any comments? Councilor Graves?
Just a question, nineteen packages were, were picked up, and only three came back. Why would that be?
I would say because of the, the ease of obtaining information, like, we advertise in various locations, internet, you know, website and all that, there's a lot of interest. And then, once they receive the document, they may feel it's beyond their scope of work. But it's easier to get that information, to review it, rather than inquire by phone or whatever, and then, you know, say that they are, aren't interested. So, I think it's the, the means of communication.
Okay, and does it cost a lot of money to put a tender out? I mean, like, the package?
Photocopying, essentially. Once the original document's done, it's photocopy staff time. The larger expensive documents, we will ask for a deposit.
Okay, but this is, this is relatively small.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those who favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Section ten, Business arising unfinished business. Ten point one is the second and final reading of the loitering bylaw, repeal the loitering bylaw, document fifteen dash zero one seven C. Jamie Ellen?
Okay, so, I don't have very much to say about this. Um, we've been talking about it a little bit, of repealing the loitering bylaw, because it's very broad, and it basically prevents anybody from using the downtown public spaces in a casual way, so parks, park benches, sidewalks, anything like that. People can't linger there or spend any time unless they're on their way from where you are meeting. So, the town's loitering bylaw includes parks, streets, sidewalks, parking lots, driveways, as public places, it prevents loitering in any of those places. And as we all know from the downtown plan, trying to encourage people to stay in our downtown, those public spaces can function as outdoor living rooms and improve sociability in the town, which has a big impact on community and social capital and even people's health. So, we don't have any concerns about disruptive behaviors that can sometimes result from loitering, because the provincial legislation, the Protection of Property Act, will remain in place, and the police can still, um, take action against those specific disruptive behaviors under that legislation, instead of the broader prohibition that's created right now with our town bylaw. So, there were some statutory requirements, and first reading of the proposed repeal was on June eighth, and then there was an advertisement in the progress bulletin on the twenty-fifth. I'm just advertising that you are considering repealing this bylaw this evening. Go. Oh, there we go. So, staff recommend that council pass a motion to repeal the town's bylaw.
Someone prepared to bring that motion forward?
I would move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the repeal of chapter one eight six, loitering bylaw, and authorize the CAO to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the municipal government act.
Seconder? Second by Councilor Tanner. Any comments from council? Councilor Tanner?
I'm happy we're progressing in the right direction on this. Every time I go downtown and sit on a park bench, I'm nervous about getting a fine, so happy we're moving this along.
After seeing that little guy in the city, get ticketed on his little motorcycle. Yeah, query of our U2. Any other comments, questions?
Questions?
All those who favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Item ten point two is the second and final reading of the proposed vending bylaw and amended town property bylaw, document fifteen dash zero one eight C. Jamie Ellen?
So, this is a new bylaw that would allow some street vending in town. So, some of the key clauses are the vending would be permitted only between eight AM and ten PM. You can't leave stalls in place overnight. Uh, there's some noise restrictions in there, and you can't bend to people and vehicles. You can't obstruct the sidewalk, and there's different requirements for groups that are trying to do some nonprofit fundraising in some of the recreational field zones in town. So, right now, there's, um, bylaw, sorry, there's vending permitted on private property but not on public property, and that's what this bylaw is going to change. It doesn't do anything about vending on private property. So, these are the locations. We're intending to have an open vending zone on King Street, so you wouldn't get a vending permit for a specific location. You'd be able to set up your vending card anywhere in that zone, within the restrictions that are itemized in the bylaw. And also, there are a number of zones in recreational fields in the town as well, and those nonprofit fundraising groups could do vending in other places. They wouldn't be restricted to those locations in the recreational fields. So, some of the conversation that we've had at councils with, with respect to competition with established businesses, particularly on King Street. So, the vending bylaw prohibits selling products or services that are the same or similar to those being sold in a store within fifty meters, and that decision about what is the same or similar is being made by the development officer by, at the time of the permit application. And the fees that I'm proposing are fifty dollars for one week, one hundred dollars for one month, and two hundred dollars for one year. There's quite a bit of competition for vending permits in this area, and some other municipalities have very, very low fees, so I don't recommend, um, having very high permit fees for this, for these kinds of permits. Um, since the town property bylaw currently forbids vending on town-owned property unless it's in association with an established festival or, or event, we also need to make an amendment to the town property bylaw to permit this street vending to take place. So, again, the statutory requirements for both the vending bylaw and the amendment to the town property bylaw. We had first reading on June eighth, and then the public notice, I've intended for you all to consider at this meeting, went out on June twenty-fifth. Since all statutory requirements for the adoption of proposed vending bylaw and amendment to the town private, town property bylaw have been met, staff recommend that council pass a motion to adopt the vending bylaw and the amendment to the town property bylaw.
So, there's two motions for your consideration tonight. Someone prepared to bring the first one forward?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the proposed vending bylaw as presented in document fifteen dash zero one eight C, adopt as bylaw for the town and authorize the CAO to publish all published notices pursuant to section one eighty, one sixty-eight of the municipal government act.
A seconder? Second by Councilor Tanner. Any comments? Deputy Mayor McGinnis?
I will be voting against the motion as per what I did in the last, the first reading. I disagree with the distance required, fifty meters from competition. I think it's unfair to existing business owners.
Councilor Forward?
My question, Jamie, would be, I know with the fire station in, in the Legion, they have to have a food handler's course in order to, to have functions there. Are these vendors going to be required to have that food handler's course, and will that be posted at their vendor's site?
Um, yes, that's a provincial requirement, so they'll be under the same obligation as, as those folks you mentioned.
Okay.
As long as they're selling food.
Yeah, okay.
Councilor McDonald, Councilor Graves?
For those who may decide not to follow the, the requirements in the zones and so on, what is the penalty?
Um, revocation permit, and also there'd be, I'm not sure, actually. We haven't outlined a specific penalty.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we have, and maybe we did, if anybody has a copy.
Yeah, I thought you did.
I thought you did, too. It seemed like a thousand dollars.
It might be a thousand dollar form.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Questions? I don't remember.
Yeah, not less than one hundred, not more than one thousand.
Yeah.
Right.
Just as long as there's something that if, if they're not following those rules and, and it is harming another business owner, that it can be dealt with and dealt with firmly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Graves?
So, just a few questions. Have we received any feedback from the business community?
I haven't had any feedback, no.
Nothing? Have you talked to the Chamber of Commerce, anything from them?
No.
And, uh, is Mariners Landing, Landing included in this bylaw? Only because it's so close to Marina, and there might be a-
It's, it's not at the moment. Um, there's no reason why we couldn't add it in future. We feel like that would be a good, a good place for things taking place.
Because if, if this is approved tomorrow, or today-
Yeah.
And I wanted to put a, a food truck down at the, at Mariners Landing to, to attract the voters for the Marina, could I, I, could I do that?
Is it, I think that's private property, is it not?
No, it's owned by us.
Is it, okay, no, you couldn't at this point.
Yeah, it just seems to me with-
You couldn't get a truck down to Mariners Landing. You mean up in that-
Yeah, in that little parking.
Yeah, so it'd be up above, it'd be on, uh, so, King Street, little park that juts in with his parking spaces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right now, it's not listed there.
No.
Yeah, anyways, it seems to me like a spock that, that could, the Marina could benefit, a food truck could benefit, the public could benefit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then, I guess, the last question is in regards to Councilor McGinnis, or Deputy Mayor McGinnis. This is a, after a year, we can adjust all this.
Absolutely.
So, if we decide that fifty meters or a hundred meters is, is not sufficient, we can adjust all of it.
Yeah, and I, I would hope that we would do that next year, just to see how things are working.
So, it's a work in motion.
Absolutely.
In progress, sorry.
Councilor Tanner?
And, you know, reading some on, articles online and so on, there are some communities where the restaurants and the food trucks are getting together to actually set this up, because it actually draws people downtown for, for enjoyment and so on, so it actually benefits both parties, so.
Councilor Mailman?
So, with their license, and if they buy it and they want it for just a month, supposing they say July's a great month, they can do it every day Monday right through to Sunday?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Question?
Questions called. All those who favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. And there's a second motion goes with that to amend the town property bylaw?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the proposed amended town property bylaw as presented in document fifteen dash zero one eight C, adopt as bylaw for the town and authorize the CAO to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the municipal government act.
A seconder? Second by Councilor Graves? Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those who favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried.
Ten point three, second and final reading for the Business Improvement District bylaw, document fifteen dash one hundred, where this is the enabling legislation.
Prepared to bring that forward?
Yes, your worship. I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the proposed Business Improvement District bylaw as presented in document fifteen dash one hundred, adopt as bylaw for the town and authorize the CAO to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the municipal government act.
A seconder? Second by Councilor McDonald. Any comments, questions? Pastor Graves?
Just a question in regards to the percentage of voting acceptance. Is it fifty percent plus one, Patrick? Or is it sixty percent plus two, or?
Pull it up here momentarily, but I believe it was set, the figure is set at fifty percent plus one, it would have to be a majority of-
And is that, is that, is that traditional? Is that, is that a-
That's correct. It's in line with what HRN did.
Wow. Seems kind of low, don't you think? Fifty percent plus one?
I think it's first passed, opposed, tomorrow, I think.
Yeah. We see how that's working out.
There is also, too, and this actually came up during the discussion within the current bid group, that were they to pursue the creation of a business improvement district, and they only got just barely past fifty percent, they might not consider that enough grassroots energy to go forward with the formation of the bid, and just because they get that vote doesn't necessarily mean they have to pursue its formation.
And you haven't got a steering committee yet, or a board, and the board and the steering committee may decide, once you get the business community involved, that it should be fifty-five percent.
Well, no, we're, the, um, the committee that's gotten us to this point, um, that has brought the current bylaw here and has driven it, was founded by the BDA.
Yeah.
And it's their intention, they, it's sort of, it was kind of like a landmark process. We had to get the legislation placed through this bylaw, and we're to allow the creation of business improvement districts and enable the town to collect a levy and so forth. And now that we've got that established, that group is going to continue on and is going to, obviously, they're not going to be able to come back. They can internally set their own expectations, I suppose, but in terms of like, from a legal standpoint, as long as they get that fifty percent plus one, they're good to proceed if they choose to.
Okay. Any questions? Councilor Tanner?
Patrick, what business representatives are on that committee? I can't remember who's on the committee, honestly.
Um, off the top of my head, I know that Rob Kittle is, and Ashton Ronizer has set a table as well for a while, of course, both Bernice and Ida from the BDA, and there have been a handful of other business reps who have come and gone, and, of course, their availability is at a premium, too, but there have been a handful of them that have been part of that process.
Any other questions?
How many business, is there a number, and how many businesses that they're involved in this bid?
Well, at this point-
Proposed businesses?
Um, at this point, the group hasn't specifically defined the geographic area that it wants to encompass yet. They were more focused on getting the legislation through and making sure that council, vis a vis, the bylaw, was supportive of the idea, and now that that's, assuming that that goes ahead this evening, the bid group would reconvene and focus next on what they want the geographic area to look like, whether they want to include just King Street, or potentially both sides of the river, and the downtown core. And really, it could be, you know, someone could come forward with the idea of having a business improvement district in another part of the town as well. It's not necessarily confined to the downtown core.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions?
Hearing none. All those who favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. Ten point four, second and final reading, Property Assessed, Clean Energy Program bylaw, the PACE bylaw, document fifteen dash one zero two and A. Welcome Leon.
Ten point four, second and final reading, Property Assessed Clean Energy Program Bylaw, the PACE bylaw document fifteen dash one zero two and A. Welcome Leon.
Yes, hello again. This being the second reading of this bylaw, you have before you a memo outlining a change that staff is recommending to the bylaw due to new information that came to light following first reading, so had we had this information, we would have proposed a slightly different bylaw to begin with. The issue is, is fairly legal in nature, the, there was a, there was an error in the, in the first legal opinion that the town received regarding how the rate should be set, at which PACE financing charges are lent to property owners, and since that time, that has been corrected in this revision to the bylaw. The, the town's legal counsel has advised that this is not a substantive change, as it were, it's, it's more administrative in nature and doesn't change the intent of the bylaw.
Thanks, Leon. So I'm prepared to bring the motion forward.
I would move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the proposed Property Assessed Clean Energy or PACE Program Bylaw as presented in document fifteen dash one zero two A, adopt as bylaw for the town and authorize the CAO to publish all public notices pursuant to section one six eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Do we have a secondor? Second by Councilor Mailman. Any comments, questions? We're moving in the right direction.
Just a couple, Leon, I like the idea of both the upgrades to the building envelope before you look at the heating sources, but there were some onboarding fees that they're going to charge, but they didn't make reference on, on the details of how much those onboarding fees are.
That's correct. As of this moment, nothing has changed in that situation since my last presentation. We still do not, we still do not know the amount, it has not been proposed to the town by Efficiency Nova Scotia, nor have we seen a program contract. Our, our anticipation is that we will see that sometime this summer, and once those information has been brought to us, including the fee amount, that will come to, to council for, for decision.
Did we have any idea what the range would be?
I, I would, I would be fearful of speculating.
Okay, no, thank you.
Councilor Graves?
Just a comment, when I was reading through this again, Leon, I was, I'm on this, the Growing Green Festival, and it occurred to me, are there other, are the banks competitive in terms of offering loans for, for homeowners or landowners or landlords that want to do this type of work? And, and, and would they be included, or could they be included somehow in, in, in the marketing? So for example, you know, one of the five major banks, the town of Bridgewater might be charging, I don't know, four point seven five percent, and they might be at five percent, but with, with less restriction, do you know what I mean? So, so by getting them involved, it would just increase the pool of money. I think we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to invest, but if you get all the banks included, if they all have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to invest, all of a sudden, we have a pool of one point five million dollars to put into, into energy efficiency in, in homes and businesses to the town of Bridgewater. Does that make any sense? Kind of?
My, my response to your first part of your question is that there are programs that banks have offered, to my, to my knowledge, we haven't assessed it in any great detail for this. I'm pretty sure that, for example, the credit union has been offering a, a green renovation, I guess you'd call it a loan.
Yeah.
The difference between all of those loans and what the town of Bridgewater's PACE program is offering is that the PACE program is tied to the property.
Yeah.
Whereas the other loans are all tied to the person.
Okay.
Is there an opportunity for joint promotion of financing opportunities? I don't see why that's not something that could be looked into during, as part of program promotion.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting idea, yeah. There's some question as to whether our offerings in competition with the offerings of, of the, of the banks and how that might be perceived.
Yeah.
But it's, it's certainly something that we could look into, yeah.
Okay, good.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. And the added item. Get back to the right screen. Under new business was eleven point one, Planning and Vending Fees Policy, it's document fifteen dash one twenty-five. That's the fees that would go with the vending. Jamie Ellen, on that list, I guess I should have, I don't have the reference point, so, for example, a development permit, administrative fee twenty-five dollars, advertising applicable. What is it now?
The, for a development permit, everything is staying the same except for those bottom three items and?
Oh, it's just the bottom three to change?
Yeah, we're just adding those three items to permit the development officer to charge those fees if somebody comes in wanting a vending permit.
So I'm prepared to bring the motion forward.
Yes, your worship, I move the Town Council of the town of Bridgewater approve the amended policy sixty-nine, planning and vending fees as policy for the town as presented in document fifteen dash one two five.
Do we have a secondor? Second by Councilor Tanner? Any comments, questions, clarifying minds? I thought they were all in the.
Just a question, so i- does this have anything to do with building permits or fire permits? Nothing, nothing to do with that?
No, no, all that stuff is staying the same, we're just adding those three items on the bottom.
Okay.
It seemed like this was the most convenient policy to add that to.
So, so none of these fees include building permits?
No.
Any other questions? Question called, also favor the motion signify in appropriate manner? Opposed, motion is carried. That concludes our agenda. I remind council, there is an in-camera meeting held immediately following this meeting to deal with a matter under the Municipal Government Act, section twenty-two, two E, contract negotiations. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Secondor? Questions called, in favor? You oppose, you're not in the other voice.